Okay, folks, are we ready? Are we ready?
Yeah.
I have seven.
Mics on.
Good evening, all. It's 7:00 PM here in historic Town Hall. And I'd like to convene open session of the Select Board for July 11th, 2024. Let's begin with the pleasurable legends, please.
Pleasurable legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first opportunities for public comment. Mr. Johansson.
Whoa. All right, Kyle. You know, this is a directional mic, right? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen. Kyle Johansson, concerned citizen in the town of Sandwich. I would like to have my minutes, my notes submitted in tonight's minutes of the meeting, if you don't mind. I come before you this evening to make a proposal that after much research and time, visually observing how our crosswalks in Sandwich need to have some serious attention directed to some sort of a conclusion that is not only safe for its citizens, but also safe who come from here to visit regardless of their physical capacity of those who might need or want to use them. Safety is paramount for those that are walking, riding a bike, or dining, driving a vehicle. It is an known fact that crosswalks create more accidents than having none at all, according to many of the traffic studies around the country. Placing a crosswalk from one side of the road to the other should include a well-thought-out engineering study that includes a solid traffic study on both vehicle and pedestrians. The first question is for me, does such a study actually warrant any crosswalks based upon the traffic at whatever location is investigated to have one installed or where one may now exist be removed? If it is decided to install a crosswalk, are both sides equally safe for whomever may use them? We have several organizations which can be used to reference in the matter of engineering and safety. We choose one and then apply that to all existing and future crosswalks loaded, located in our town going forward. Understanding that we have some who might find using computational language to obtain the results they may be looking for does not stand tall with me, for I know that first from personal experience that to obtain the best results, it takes a whole lot of engineering and planning, some give and take between departments, and financial support and inclusion in our town budget so that our Department of Public Works can obtain the results of all the working details that have now been funded to accomplish. I recently published a letter in the Sandwich Enterprise with my opinion, which I will now repeat in some manner. These are my own opinions to be given. The first thing that needs to be done, in my opinion, is that each present member of the Board of Selectmen do a fact-finding ride around town and make a list of all the crosswalks you see and what you determine is safe and not safe. Then sit down with the town's engineering department and work out the actual work list with a set of priority goals. Then the Selectmen should make a crosswalk policy like has been done in some towns, which now bandades how these crosswalks will be put in place, removed, or re-engineered to comply what the Selectmen will now has a standard document with some enforcement power upon which a budget funding source will be included and brought before town meeting for approval to be implemented. After all this process is completed, our Department of Public Works, Mr. Tilton, will be able to supply the knowledge of his department and give a priority list set by the Selectmen will be able to accomplish making the Sandwich crosswalk safe for everyone into the future. I can say that from my own personal observations and traveling on our roadways, that simply putting some paint down is not going to solve any present problems we now have in the long term. Before I go, I will say Sandwich has been blessed to have a person who cares about our town in such a manner that he has directed it to a period in time when history will show he was the right person doing this job at a time when it needed to get done and that he brought together the right staff to get it done. And that would be our town manager, Mr. Dunham. Progress is made here in Sandwich under a goal-setting leadership process that has been followed, along with taking years of planning to obtain the fruits of everyone's labor, which has also included several Selectmen Boards over the years. Let no one disdain that progress that has kept Sandwich out front here on the Cape. Thank you for my time to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Johansson. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, Candy Thompson, 30 Kensington Drive. It appears from the agenda this evening that the Board will soon make a decision that will impact the future of our historic village, perhaps for years to come. I've been told that the prevailing sentiment is to auction off the old Town Hall Annex to the highest bidder, take the money and use it for other projects. But I would urge you to embrace the successful formula employed last year when the first floor of this building was repurposed in a way that enhances our cultural and historical heritage and benefits tourism. Sure, auctioning off 145 Main would create a short-term windfall, but that's a one-time windfall, and is it the best outcome for a town that relies on its historic charm to attract tourists? State records show that the town has 664 short-term rentals, nine B&amp;Bs, five motels, 14 hotels, and seven lodging houses registered for tax purposes. The state also estimates that the Sandwich population swells in the summer from 20,000 to 35,000. Should we protect and improve our standing as a tourism destination? That seems prudent. This is a prime real estate property smack dab in the middle of Main Street that comes with 25 off-street parking spaces to augment the 45 at the library. Please keep in mind our new Select Board-approved, Town Meeting-approved, local comprehensive plan. Page 138 lists as a goal, quote, "Identify off-street public parking within the village area for visitors and residents." Page 150 lists as an action to be taken before 2028, quote, "Leverage Sandwich's historic assets, including historical buildings and archives, by coordinating with town groups and departments to attract and support cultural tourism and local usage of those assets." Either this plan means something, or it doesn't. Where else can the town create more public off-street parking in the village? And then there's the gamble the town takes on giving the keys to the highest bidder. It's not the first tenant you worry about, it's the second, third, and fourth ones you need to consider. In other words, if the highest bidder fails to make a go of it, what comes next? Whatever that may be would slip from the town's complete control. So that brings us to option two, finding a use for the Annex that provides continuity for our village vibe and is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. The blueprint is right in front of us. After the Annex emptied, Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper and Town Planner Ralph Fataco put their heads together to find a suitable occupant. They came up with a winner, the Sandwich Arts Alliance. The three-year lease did more than just keep the lights on here. It has, along with the Glass Museum, created a destination and anchor at one end of the village. What if the town had a place for all of its history-minded folks, with small offices carved out for the Sandwich Historical Commission and the Friends of the Sandwich Town Archives? The building could house displays from the Thornton Burgess Society and the Sandwich Historical Society. It could provide small working spaces for the folks who bring theater and musical productions to the Glass Town stage and to our Cultural District Steering Committee. In short, it could be a beehive of creative and historical activities found in so many other area tourist towns with rich heritages. In starting the ball rolling at the old Town Hall, Heather and Ralph deserve kudos for thinking outside the box with an eye toward our future. There's no reason they can't use the local comprehensive plan to try and make more magic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Review and approval of minutes for June 20th, 2024.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of 6:20, 24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. Town Manager Report.
The Board's next meeting will be two weeks from tonight, which is July 25th. We're going to talk about one of the items on the agenda a little bit later tonight. I'm sure Board members might bring this up in a few minutes, but I just wanted to thank the Recreation Department and especially Director Tricia McDonald and numerous volunteers, several of which are in this room right now, and many, many others for their work on the fireworks and the parade. Really is like Sandwich Americana at its best. Couple of other quick updates on projects that we've talked about recently. The Route 130 Quaker Meeting House Road intersection in front of the Forestdale School. So I know there was a lot of work going on with the paving, getting it to where it is now. There's a bunch of drainage improvements and other roadside work taking place. The paving that's done so far is the second to the last coat. It's not the last coat, so the goal is the final coat will go down before the end of August and before school starts. That's the primary goal. And we want to thank the contractor out there, Lawrence Lynch. They've really been making good progress and focusing on it. And from what I'm hearing, that deadline should not be an issue, you know, barring crazy weather. And then next spring, we would have to complete some of the roadside improvements. But, you know, in terms of the functionality of the intersection, should see a big difference by the end of August. We appreciate people's patience while that takes place. And then a couple meetings ago, Chief Burke was in, and he had mentioned about concerns at the U.S. Coast Guard Station along the canal. So he and some other Cape officials sent letters to the Coast Guard Sector Commander, who responded very quickly and has been very open to the concerns. And I think it's a classic case of preaching to the choir. That's the whole purpose of what the Coast Guard does. They feel worse than anyone in terms of not being able to be open as many hours as they traditionally are. And it's strictly a personnel shortage. It's not a funding shortage, and apparently it's happening nationwide, not just in our area. So he has met with several of the people and expressed concerns. They're changing some schedules to at least try to have some presence every day in the summer, even with reduced hours. And then he's going to continue to meet with the appropriate groups, which include the Army Corps of Engineers as well. So, you know, we're going to keep meeting with them and trying to help in any way we can, but it is a shortage that's happening more than just our area, and they feel as bad as we do. So I think, I think we'll see some improvements, but, you know, without an influx of staffing, they probably won't see the big changes that we hope.
Unfortunate circumstances. Anybody with any questions?
Is there any way we can recoup our costs for the Coast Guard coverage?
Yeah, we haven't had to do too much. I think what, this is generally in terms of what Chief Burke has told me, if there's an issue that happens in the marina, our marina staff can assist, but really aren't supposed to go out of the basin. The Army Corps will help anywhere within the canal, but generally don't go outside the canal. And then the fire apparatus in both Sandwich and in Barnstable Harbor, so we've been working closely with Barnstable and the county, could respond from either those areas. And, you know, hopefully some of these things happen when the real professionals are there. We don't want to put our staff or others at extreme risk when they're not really trained for that level of rescue. If a boat, you know, stops working and needs to be towed back in, that's one thing. But if someone is, you know, falling overboard or something, that's not what our specialty is. So I think there's very strict protocols that those organizations are talking about, so no one sort of oversteps their capabilities. So I know those discussions are taking place.
I guess that's what my biggest concern is, is that this is not our...
Yeah.
This is not something our fire, any fire departments usually do. Towns can, towns sometimes support marine services. Are we sure that we're covered, like for insurance and all that stuff, if we go out there and do something?
We have a lot of insurance, but you're right in terms of some of our costs. I'll talk to the chief about that and see what might be able to take place.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Correspondence, statements, announcements, future items, and follow-up.
I know this is an old one, but I know in the last several weeks, and Charlie emailed you about this, but the cellphone reception here in town has gotten so bad during the summer. I know that we're disproportionately, you know, affected by that because of our proximity to Route 6 and the bridges. You know, today, when I left the 6A Stop and Shop all the way back, passed through town, past Town Hall, almost, you know, past Gully Lane, I had no service with Verizon whatsoever. I mean, restart the phone, there was just no service, couldn't make a phone call, anything. And I think that it's, some of the people that I've talked to in town as well, like this is really, you know, starting to become a more reoccurring problem, I would say, you know, that disproportionately affects us. And I know that we have leases on town property with all the cellphone providers, and it's just, yeah, I've gotten calls about it. I know there's not a lot that the town can do, but I know in speaking with Verizon specifically and T-Mobile, that, I haven't talked to AT&amp;T person, did not get back to me, but that they, you know, they have a problem with the, you know, strictly the volume of calls that are, or phones or devices that are hitting it. But I think that we're being, ourselves, you know, whether it's, you call it being selfish or not, but we're being disproportionately affected because of the, you know, and the traffic backs up, it just, you know, it just collapses the network. And I'm not sure if that's something at a state level we can ask, you know, some of our, you know, local reps or, you know, I know that there's communications divisions within the state that deal with those, you know, companies and how they, you know, how they're licensed or how they, you know, handle the towers and whatnot, but it's really becoming an issue to the point where I know people have asked me about it, because I've brought it up, you know, previously, but it's really gotten to a point where, you know, I can't use it in my house, me specifically, I can't use it in my house. You know, today, driving down 6A, it just didn't work at all. You know, it's really gotten to the point where I think it's gotten significantly worse to a point where it's affecting. And I know, you know, then it starts affecting public safety and things like that, because they, you know, rely on some of those devices, you know, whether it's through the iPads or whatever, and they have priority on the network. But if it's totally overloaded and it collapsed, that's, you know, that's a safety thing as well. So that's all I got.
I think we've all been approached with this, and our effective access is being explored. Anybody else for correspondence, statements? I have a couple. You know, School Committee. It's never too late to observe a moment of silence in memory of Sandwich Middle High School student Colby Lippincott, if we don't mind, please. Thank you. Please be reminded as well, the Colby Lippincott Memorial Scholarship Fund has been established, and designated donations may be made to the treasurer, Town of Sandwich, at 100 Route 6A. Then related to School Committee, I would like to recognize, we would like to recognize the Sandwich Public School educators who won the 2024 Golden Apple Awards for Excellence at Forestdale School, Laura Tedeschi; at Oak Ridge, Arthur Guerra; at the Sandwich Middle High School, Haley Stockwell and Beth Donahue. Congratulations and thank you for your efforts. Finance Committee reorganized. Congratulations to Ed Colopy. Thank you to Nancy Crossman. The Reserve Fund transfer was approved. Town facilities presentation was received from Brian Schlegel. Progress in all regards. And bikeways and pedestrian will be meeting on Monday, July 15th, in Sand Hill School. That's all I have. And as we broached earlier, thank you for everyone, to everyone who was involved in the parade and the fireworks, you know, such hard work and such positive results. Thanks to all. All right.
Charlie, if my may.
Yes, please.
Because you will never say this, because you're on it, but some of the cost savings for these big events is because the Sandwich Citizens Police Academy graduates, they're in the brown suits you see, brown uniforms around all these events, play a major part in keeping things going, and at no cost, they're volunteers. So thank you, Charlie, because I know you're a big one.
Quite welcome. On to staff meeting. Town Council Attorney Amy Questle with an overview of town position on Heritage Adventure Park.
Hello, everyone. So thank you for having me again. My name is Amy Questle, Town Council's office. So I'm just here to kind of give you an overview update on the Heritage Museum and Garden, the Aerial Adventure Park. So as you know, there was litigation in 2014, there was litigation in 2019. I was involved in the 2019 litigation, but I, I've reviewed all of the information, I've reviewed the files, I've reviewed decisions. I also reviewed submittals by a butters, and I've reviewed public comments by a butters. And I can unequivocally state that Mr. Brides did not err in granting the building permit or the certificate of occupancy for the Heritage Aerial Adventure Park. Further, I see no reason whatsoever that any outstanding permit should be rescinded at this time. So just quickly going through the permits and some of the concerns with the permits. We had a 2014 certificate of appropriateness. There's a concern that two lots were not noted on that certificate of appropriateness. However, the, there was also a, a building permit issued. That building permit was appealed in 2014. ZBA upheld it, and then that was, again, appealed to Barnstable Superior Court. In that Barnstable Superior Court litigation, the certificate of appropriateness came up in that litigation. It was mentioned in the decision, and in the decision, Judge Moriarty specifically stated that if there was some kind of notice issue, as soon as someone found out about the decision, they then should have appealed it. There was no appeal taken of that 2014. So even if you missed the 10 days because you didn't get notice, as soon as you found out about the decision, you then should have appealed it. That was not done. So the 2014 certificate of appropriateness was not appealed. The 2014 zoning board decision that affirmed the building permit, that was appealed, it went to court, it was not any, it was not further appealed. So then we come, we come forward to 2019. A special permit was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. That was appealed to Barnstable Superior Court. In that appeal, the court found that the plaintiffs did not have standing. However, what the court did in that appeal was a little bit unusual, because even, even though the judge found that there was no standing, she didn't stop there. She then went on to say, even if they had standing, there was, the ZBA decision should be upheld. And that decision was not appealed. So there's a 30-day appeal from a Superior Court decision, and that was not appealed. So that decision affirming the special permit is final. Furthermore, there was a certificate of appropriateness in 2019, which modified the 2014 certificate because the, they had to keep within 100-foot setback. That certificate of appropriateness was issued, and again, it was not appealed. It was not appealed to the old colony. So it had, there was 10 days to appeal it regionally, and then there's 20 days after that to appeal it to district court. And again, it was not appealed. So, you know, I've, I've gone through all of the appeal, all of the permits, all of the permits are final, they are not, the statute of limitations for any appeal is over, and therefore, Mr. Brides was presented with a building permit application. There are certain documents that are required for a building permit that are required under this, under the state building code. And those, those documents, the construction control documents, all of those, those were also submitted, and a building permit was issued. The building permit was issued, and again, that building permit was not appealed. There are, that could have been appealed to the Building Code Appeals Board within 45 days. It's now been probably 150 days. So it, again, the statute of limitations is over. So right now, there is, there's no avenue of appeal, the statute of limitations has run. There, in my opinion, there's absolutely no issue with the building permit being issued, the certificate of occupancy being issued. With regard to the operation of the park, that has to, that is under the state control, the safety is under the state. So if there's any question about the safety of the ropes course, that would go to the state, that wouldn't even come to the town. So that's something that would, would go to the state and not the town. And then, you know, further, there's, there's other so-called issues, you know, again, with regard to this 67 Grove versus the Zero Forest and Zero Shami, you know, that, that's a non-issue at this point, because there was a chance to appeal that, and it just, it didn't happen. And then, you know, with regard to the structure and the size of the structure, the court specifically found that it was a singular, the structure, it was a single structure consisting of platforms. The structure is contained within the course, the structure is not the course. So when the judge says that the course is approximately five acres, the judge did not mean that the, that the structure was five acres. She specifically notes that the structure is 280 square feet, and that is in the decision. I have, you know, I have sites to the decision pages, but I'm not going to bore you, but those are all within, you know, those are all within the decision. So, you know, I see absolutely no reason for this board, or the town, actually. I mean, this is a permitting matter, so it really wouldn't even be under the jurisdiction of the select board. And so, you know, I'm hoping that my, my research and, you know, this presentation maybe, maybe resolves some issues because I really did a lot of work here and I do not see any issues. I don't see any errors on behalf of the building department at all in this matter.
Thank you, Counselor. Very meticulous effort. Thank you very much, Mr. George.
Sounds like you did quite a bit of a lot of work and thank you for that. It's on, yeah. And we've been time and time and every week, we get these letters and whatnot and it's getting frustrating. So that's why I asked Mr. Dunham to have you come in and clarify this. So in a nutshell, basically, we're good to go with this park and we shouldn't have to have any more investigations or letters sent to us because legally, this is over. Basically, that's what I wanted to find out.
That is my opinion.
So it's over, ready to go. And as far as any, any appeals or anything like that, at time when it's over, they're done. So we've got the green light and our building inspector doesn't have to get any more letters, we don't have to get any more letters sent to us.
Historic District Commission, they, they're.
They got them.
They have, they issued their decisions in 2014 and 2019. Again, they have a 10-day appeal period, so they're over.
So we're good to go.
Yes.
But is Heritage going to get a copy of this or some kind of letter from us stating that we investigated it?
We can share what we had in the, the board packet, that's public.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It was nice seeing everyone.
Well, it's, it's not a public forum.
No, it's not.
You could wait, if you have a comment, you could wait until open comments at the end of the meeting. No, until the end of the meeting, you could express your views. All business. Fiscal year 25 budget. And relevant updates.
Keep putting this on, hoping that we'll hear from the state and it's, it's still at the conference committee, they haven't taken a position on the final numbers to recommend to the governor. So we've gotten several emails from the Mass Municipal Association just updating us on some of the key provisions that are still being discussed. At this point, a lot of it has shifted from focus on numbers in the budget to, you know, different parts of bills that have been added to the budget, which is often done, that may help towns in terms of things like economic development or housing and, and similar type issues. And so we're still waiting for that final word. And just because it is somewhat related to all this, you know, Heather and I have been tracking as best we can, the, the two special acts that the town has up there, and I'm not even counting the, the town charter because that just got done, but the one that the board approved and town meeting approved for the additional liquor licenses, the Senate Committee that's been reviewing it has asked for some wording changes. They're considered de minimis and so it's still going through that process, it hasn't come out of the committee that's reviewing it. And then probably most importantly to us is the wastewater special act that was adopted by town meeting in November of 2022. We're still waiting on that. That was positively referred out of the subcommittee that was reviewing it and is now before, I believe, the Senate Ways and Means Committee, no position has been taken yet. So we're still waiting, we're hopeful, but I know as the board is aware, that's the one that we have the most riding on and that we're the most interested in. So so far, there haven't been any changes to the language that town meeting approved and the selectmen forwarded. So we'll see, see what happens over, hopefully the next few weeks, not the next several months, but time will tell.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Bud? Community Preservation Act, Historic Preservation Restriction, Sandwich Glass Museum. It's, it's, it's in your packets and we need a motion to approve of the, of the act.
Yes, the, yes, the agreement that puts the historic preservation on the roof at the glass museum. And town council's gone through the language and it's all been approved. And I think, assuming you vote to approve it, we have had that in your signed folder. So, you know, pending the vote, we can keep processing that.
Just one question, Bud. Why is it just the roof?
Because that's what we gave the money for. It's only what funds we provided and what it was used for. Probably the best example is First Church when funding was given for certain improvements there. There were many other improvements that the church funded on their own, so their improvements weren't part of the restriction, but what we funded was.
Just out of interest, what does that mean? If you can't move the, change the roof?
No, it means that they would have to follow the appropriate standards. Once it's been preserved historically, they can't do it a different way. So they would have to get, you know, follow certain, I know the Secretary of the Interior standards, if there's a real preservation restriction you have to follow. Not that there isn't flexibility, you know, you don't have to use cedar shingles if the appropriate historic entities approve things like architectural shingles that are composite, those are allowed. It's just you have to go through processes.
Make a motion, we approve the Community Preservation Act, Historic Preservation Restriction, Sandwich Glass Museum.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Miller. In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. Okay. July 25th, board meeting. Various updates.
Yes, I just wanted to tip the board off that the Bike and Pedestrian Committee is coming to give updates on a lot of their work, including some, a grant we recently received to help with the design, to try to connect the canal recreational path up to the service road, shared use path. So, you know, we continue to get some state money to help us with that planning. Obviously, when we get to implementation, that'll be very interesting on how that can all be accomplished. In addition, because of some of the questions that have come up at our last few meetings on crosswalks, I know representatives of DPW and engineering will be in to give updates on that. And also want to talk about the intersection that I mentioned earlier under my report. But also, once that's done, the next big project, as we've been working on for a long time, is the Quaker Meeting House-Katua Road intersection. Thankfully, not as much drainage work is involved, more pavement than exists at the Forestdale intersection. But there's a lot of similarity in terms of the crosswalks that people will see soon at, in front of the Forestdale School, that would also be included at that larger intersection. So I think they want to highlight that. And just a really quick update from Paul Tilton, as Patrick had mentioned a couple weeks ago, that DigSafe had to come out to approve certain things, so that process had been completed for the crosswalks on Katua Road. The type of signs changes pretty regularly from the federal standards and so the appropriate current signs have been ordered and received. So they're getting really close to implement those. My guess would be by the time of your next meeting, those may be in. And again, there's crosswalks there now with signage, it's just it'll be improved, more visible signage. And I know Paul, when he comes in, wants to talk a little bit about the crosswalk striping pattern and other things because, you know, the federal standards really want consistency and they also stress for flexibility in front of schools because if students are regularly crossing, they allow certain things that maybe they wouldn't in other areas. So he's going to touch on those, that's his expertise and they'll be in in a couple weeks for that update.
Great.
Question.
Sure.
I don't know, Charlie, maybe you could answer this, but at the, on the bike path, they're digging up on the first intersection, is that part of the bike path? You know, as you turn on the.
Right by service road?
Yeah.
Gas line.
Okay. Very deep hole.
Yeah.
That's it? Thank you. Okay. Draft select board meeting schedule through the spring of 2025.
This is really rough. I just know at our last meeting, when we had this on, we noticed that we were getting close to the end. So I tried to take it from July and then carry it out through the end of next June. I went on the Mass Municipal Association website because there's a couple of meetings that we try to work around. And I'll be honest, one of the meetings was there, but the other two weren't, so still waiting to get information on that. So this is tentative, but I just wanted to put it out there and I know, especially at certain vacation times of the year, if board members have certain things scheduled, we can be flexible and work around it. But I just wanted to get a draft for us to look at and, you know, we can finalize it. As we proceed, all the dates that we have between July and the end of September are the same ones that we were looking at the last several times we've looked at this. Just as a placeholder, we always, if we need a special town meeting, we usually try to shoot between Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. And so I did pick that Monday just as a placeholder so we'd have it out there. Doesn't mean if we needed to have one, we couldn't have one sooner or later or at the board's discretion, but I just wanted to put that on the list. It's sort of depressing when you see that the budget presentation is on the first page of this and it's not that far away.
Indeed. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairperson. I have none. Anybody else? Okay. New business, other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairperson. Again, I have none at this point. Yes, Bob?
I got one. I had a young lady approach me this afternoon and I hadn't seen her for 30 years. And she remembers when we used to have the Squid Dancers down on Java Street and with Freddie Bunker and the Holy Poki and all that. She said, why aren't we doing that ever again? And I said, well, never thought about it. It's happening in Bourne, she said. And she was with a gentleman that is willing to investigate it and see if we can get somebody. I thought maybe I'd bring it up to Guy Boucher and say on a Friday or Saturday night, we could do it like we used to do. We used to block off Java Street and the kids used to go down there and have one hell of a time. I remember when I was a kid, we used to go and so that's what, if the board doesn't care, I'd like to maybe pursue it and see if we can come up with that maybe, not this year, but next year. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. We had a good time. I remember as a little kid.
Always had music.
Yeah, music. Freddie Bunker was up there on the back of his old platform truck, hokey pokey with his wife and, you know, it was a lot of fun. They had food trucks, we could get food trucks, ice cream truck come down and restaurants could benefit from it around there too.
Yeah.
All right?
Get the chamber involved as well.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, very good.
Okay. Moving on to second opportunity for public comment.
I left a handout with everybody. On the back of the handout, there's a blueprint. Would you open it up just for a second for me?
Okay. Pardon me. Mrs. De Perseo, would you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. My name is Carlo De Perseo. I live at 11 Morgan Trail.
Okay, thank you. And you'll have five minutes.
Okay, can you open that up? Got it open? Would you find lot one for me? Raise your hand if you found it. Would you find lot two for me? Would you raise your hand if you find lot two? Lot parcel one, lot parcel two. Lot six, anybody find lot six? Lot parcel six. If anybody can find any boundaries of the lot lines, would you raise your hand? Anybody find any boundaries? Anybody find any dimensions from the, the building site to one of those lot lines as required by the building code? 107.2.5. Well, what are we looking at? I think what I asked for and they gave me was the as-built plan. I had to turn 40 of these in between 70 and 80 when I was building homes and I'm sure there are people here in the building business. In the right-hand side, you'll say, you'll see something that says in a box, I certified the locate, the locations, elevations, et cetera, et cetera. On this plan, from actual surveys made on the ground, the building structures shown herein include the two yards and all the platforms. This plan identifies nothing on that lot. You can't tell me where the, where the structure is, the, the course. You can't tell me that. It's not on this plan. That's a requirement before you give a certificate of occupancy. So that's normal. Can you turn to page six of the handout I gave you? Page six is a site plan. It's the site plan you turned in when you're going for a license. It's extremely important that it be accurate. You're giving it to the state and they've got all kinds of warnings, but it better be accurate. If you look in the upper right-hand corner of that site plan, it says, for the Mass License 662, Heritage Ropes Course, 67 Grove Street. This rope course is not on 67 Grove Street and that never should have been submitted this way in this day and age. Maybe 10 years ago, somebody wasn't sure. But they know today it's not on 67 Grove Street. They absolutely know that. But they're trying to, trying to tell the state that they're on the right lot, the lot that was for the building permit, 67 Grove Street, which was the lot that was on the COA, 67 Grove Street, which was the lot that was advertised on April 11th, 2014, when we all were, had so much faith and they were going to put a beautiful exhibit up there and didn't know where they weren't for 30 days. But let me tell you a little more here. If you go to the next page. It gives you the list of the things you have to provide. And just above the blacked-out area, you'll say, submit it proper site plans. Are they proper site plans? If they're on the wrong lot. Being on the wrong lot is everything in this case. It's every detail of this case is being on the wrong lot. Because they didn't want Abutters to have anything to say. Go to the next page, page eight. Down the bottom, there's two red arrows. Mr. Beaman Azam signed it. It says, I certify under penalty of perjury that to the best of my knowledge, I filed taxes and all that. And the information submitted with the application is true to the best of my knowledge. That ain't true. It's not true to the best of his knowledge. And he knows it and everybody knows it. Everybody in this room knows it. That's wrong. That's cheating the citizens. That's making us look like the village idiots. We're the village idiots. We can fool them. We'll just put in the wrong lot numbers. No problem at all. Would they get their good lawyer to come up here and say everything's okay? Let me tell you about the COA.
Mr. De Perseo?
Okay, I'm done.
Yes, sir. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening. Tom Stanton, 9 Morgan Trail, Sandwich. This all started with Certificate of Appropriateness.
April 2014, advertised in the Enterprise. Aerial Adventure Exhibit, 67 Grove Street, map 37 Lot 6. Let me say that again. Aerial Adventure Exhibit. Now, by the law, is that legal? I don't know. Maybe we can ask the lawyer. But to me, that was deceitful because I've been to many exhibits up at the heritage. My favorite was the Andrew Wyatt, but it was an exhibit. It was there for a certain amount of time, and then it was gone. So an aerial adventure exhibit, I think you're going to have the Wright Brothers or some airplane on exhibit that we can see. So you have to remember, this is 2014. Nobody knows anything that's going on up there. So that next Monday, I'm walking my dog like I do every morning, and it's a bunch of guys working in the woods. So being the nosy neighbor I am, I walk over and ask them what they're doing. "We're building a zip line." That's how we found out. So let's get back to 1443. So 1443 goes to the Historic Committee. They approve it. 67 Grove Street, map 37 Lot 6. Okay? So like I said the last time I was here, now if I'm the building inspector and I come in on Monday morning, I said, "Where am I going today?" "Oh, I'm going to 67 Grove Street to look at map 37 Lot 6." And I go up there, and I walk in the front door, and I said, "Where's, where's the exhibit going?" "Oh, it's not here. It's over there." If you were the building inspector, wouldn't you say, "There's something wrong here," and stop? But they didn't. They just kept going. All right? So now, we get to 2019, and we get a building permit for demolishing one unit, building one unit, and moving 16 units. All three of those items have COAs. But there's no COA for Lot 2 because 1443 is for 37.6, and you can't move it. You can change the building, the building permit if you want to, but you have to go back to the, to the historic to get a COA for Lot 2, and it's never been done. And we've been saying it for 10 years, and that's the problem here. Now, you can listen to anybody else, but that's the problem. And if you break it down and look at it like that, you'll see we're right. Walk yourself through it. Ask people. There's no COA. It's Lot 2 up there. Thanks for your time, and I hope you look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Anybody else for public comment? Closing remarks. Let us please continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe, the conflict in the Middle East, and the overall threats to world peace, and our thoughts and prayers. Executive Session. The Chair declares that having an open session may have a detrimental effect upon the town's bargaining, litigating, or negotiating position as applicable and as described in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A. Purpose: To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, acquisition of real property, disposition of real property. To comply with Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law 30A, Section F. Review, potential approval, and potential release of executive session meeting minutes for May 23, 2024, and June 6, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We go to executive session.
Second.
A motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
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 And I, 5-0.
Just add, just a not to return to public session? Just, okay.
That was, that was an X on my hit parade. Thank you. We will not be returning to public session tonight. Our next public meeting is Thursday, July 25, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in Historic Town Hall. Thank you.